Yes, thank you. Welcome everybody to the December fourteenth meeting of the town council. Pursuant to the agenda, we will do the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor may go into the record. Another moment of silence. It is the third anniversary of Sandy Walker.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Bear. Of course, everybody, our hearts in prayers, we want everybody that was affected on that day. Thank you. Item two on the agenda, public comments. Peter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Peter Orinsky, one-on-one brother drive. And, yes, I know there's a flag man around town for reasons I've too long to divulge of, but I've spoken to your bride, so you kind of guess what my theme is, yes, sir. I'm looking to ask you to allow me to make two gifts to the new team, Scott just got. Forty years, maybe twenty years now, I've been looking at a Connecticut flag, and I have been saying it's dirty, it's old, it just doesn't hold up well for the next two goes. So since nothing has been done, I'm here to do something about it, and I wonder if you would accept from me the gift. And I have the stand, I have the pole in the car, and I have finally a proper finial, because no Connecticut flag takes an eagle finial, only the Old Glory does. So it's bothered me for twenty years. There's no small matter, I mean, so I wonder if you would accept an American-made flag, and it looks pretty, if I can get it up straight.
Ooh, nice.
Very nice.
So this is a Scott State of the Arts flag. If you allow me, if you guys allow me to make a gift, of the stand, and the pole, the finial, and a new flag, I'll bring it to your office.
I would very much appreciate that, yes, thank you very much, sir.
No problem at all. Then I have a second dream, that we don't please while I'm still around. Fly a three-by-five flag on top of that flagpole in front of the town hall. Three-by-five, five American flag. It looks honestly like boxer shorts, I apologize. Every time I go by, I go like this. A five-by-eight flag is needed. Five-by-eight followed by three-by-five in Milford and three-by-five POWIA. And just to start things out on a right note, I would love to make a present of that, too. So I propose to give to the new team, a five-by-eight American flag, a USA made, and a better flag than the Old Glory.
I would certainly appreciate that, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
It makes me feel better than in a long way.
Thank you.
And when I go by, I'll always think of you. Well, in a nice way, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. No, not yet, but I can take it if it surprises me.
Alright. Anybody else with public comment?
James?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council. My name is James Furlough. I'm here representing One Witch Hose Company Number Two as chief of One Witch Hose Company Number Two. On your agenda tonight is the hazardous mitigation plan. I'd like to let you know that the local fire department is certainly in favor of that plan. It deals a lot with the different types of disasters, and is a good base plan. I was actually involved in putting it together, so I am aware of what's in it. I've actually been one of the few people who had read the two-and-a-half inches worth of material in there. Thankfully, there's a lot of pictures. But with that, we are certainly in encouragement for you guys to go forward with that, towards adoption of that. It's actually not a regulation, it's a guidance manual, is what it is. With that, it could potentially benefit us by being able to go forward with the different types of FEMA grants that would benefit the department as well as the town. One of the things we're looking potentially into, as many of you know, we always talk about our aerial at every budget meeting, one of the things I'd like to do is I'd like to take a stab at going forward with that, try and get a regional aerial in this area and replace our aging aerial. So that's one of my type of goals, and as you know, our current configuration at the firehouse, we are really looking or trying to look into different ways, we're looking outside of the box of how to get funding to supply us with the needs that we have to cover the health, welfare, and safety of this community. So I'll just, you know, that's my spiel with it. I have to head off to another meeting right now, but I thank you for your consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Anybody else with public comment? There are no other individuals. Move on to number three on the agenda. The approval of the prior minutes, the regular meeting of the town council of eleven twenty-three two thousand and fifteen. Is there a move? Any discussion?
Yeah. Page eleven, referring to the names of rubber bands instead of bands, I thought it was a stage of those. More paragraphs.
I believe it starts with brief discussions with Mr. Bynum, considering whether the turn wheel should be A, instead of bands, it's actually V A N, natural V A N. Eleven sixteen. Do you have a lot of friendly numbers for that?
Yeah.
Mary?
Don't.
Yeah, someone with this. Okay, and B A N, instead of bands. So they can know that revision anywhere it comes up in finance, that's usually what's written first. Any other comments? Any motions?
We made a motion.
All in favor? All opposed? Abstained. Yes, the next motion, the next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting of the minutes from the special organization meeting of the town council from twelve to two thousand and fifteen. Comment?
I make a motion to the special organization meeting of the town council of twelve to twenty-three, with a correction under the appointment of the attorneys, and the change would be the and is stuck out, and so it would be of the firm, John Toward and D. Randall Deville, of the firm of Kramer Anderson, town attorneys.
Yes, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, number nine, rules of procedures. I made a comment that I just wanted to make sure that council had the opportunity per charter to add to the agenda, and we all agree at that meeting, and I just like to make sure it's in the minutes.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Bar, Mr. Bear?
All right, just for the sake of clarity, attorney should be attorneys.
Yeah, that's enough.
Alright, I'll note that. And Kramer Anderson, should they add their license after that?
You mean LLP?
Yeah.
Correct, in the interest of detail. Sure. Kramer Anderson, LLP.
Okay.
To denote the, not the individuals, but the law firm, the institution. Absolutely. There you go. Any other discussion? Just to, yes, Mr. Bar.
Reminder that as of next year, the town council meetings will be at seven, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that people won't get confused and show up with a following.
Yes, they will be pursuant to the rules and procedures that we adopted. We did move the meetings from seven-thirty to seven o'clock. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of approval of the minutes with those revisions? Aye. Seconded?
Opposed?
Abstained. Motion carries, the minutes are active with the revisions. Number four, mayor's remarks. I will try to keep them brief, but there are some things I did want to update council. I did receive a formal notice from Mr. Ray Jankowski, who has been director of finance for many, many years for the town of Milford, that he does intend to retire on February fifth. So I wanted to take this opportunity to extend my thanks to Mr. Ray Jankowski on behalf of not only all the mayors that you've served, the town councils, but the town itself and the community, and thanking him for his years of service, and how much we do appreciate all the hard work that he's put into, and continues to put into, being the director of finance for the town. So thank you for that, and there will certainly be a more appropriate, kind of, thank you later on, but I did want to mention that, and thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
The Pennybun Committee was previously tabled, and it's not on the agenda this time, I want you to know that, but haven't forgotten about it, but we are going to have a review with the facilities for the town, you know, for the public works, to get an idea of the state of the building before we set forth a committee to determine what use it could be used for. So I think it's a chicken and the egg, and we want to know what the state of the building is going to be before we start talking about its uses. There are some open appointments as well, to some vacant boards and commissions. Review the charter, we have until March to make those appointments, and I'll be recommending that, you know, if somebody's interested from it, I'll refer them to the respective RTC, DTC, and then consider the recommendations after that. And there is a holiday party in the mayor's office scheduled for December eighteenth, I believe at twelve o'clock. The community is invited, yes, Mr. Bar?
What do we dependents do? You said RTC.
Independents will, yeah, I'll come to the mayor's office and I'll, and I'll address them individual. And the holiday party, extend the invitation to the community, to the members of the board, and anybody else. The mayor's office will be open December eighteenth, and there will be some light refreshments served. And to extend, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Christmas to everybody as we get into this holiday season. So, number five on the agenda. The appointments to the HUSITAN Resource Recovery Authority for myself, David, and Brian. All in favor? Excuse me, discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Was the former person David, or?
Give me the former mayor.
I just, I don't know.
I think it's, I attended a meeting last week, and according to their charter, you have to be appointed by your town council to be a formal member of the HRA. The former mayor was, so that was requested appointment in his body.
So did she retire?
No, I believe so. I think it terminates with the office.
Okay, because I didn't read it that way, the charter was so.
Okay. So any further discussion? There's been a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Number six, reappointments to the Northwest Connecticut Public Safety Communications Center Incorporated of Dana Hesp for the term of January first two thousand and sixteen to December thirty-first two thousand and seventeen. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Number seven on the agenda is the tax collector refunds. You see in the packet there is a statement from the office of the tax collector dated December fourteenth two thousand and fifteen. It does denote a balance, the account was nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty thousand, fifty cents. December refunds were four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, leaving a balance after the December refunds of eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twelve cents. So no move?
Is that good?
All in favor? Close. Abstained. Motion carries. Number eight on the agenda. Eight A is the discussion and action to authorize the town of Sherman, Winkley Campbellwood Lake Authority as its agent to submit on behalf of the town of Milford, a proposal for the funds for the Intertown Capital Equipment Purchasing Incentive, ICE program, for the purpose of purchasing a safety patrol boat for use by the Campbellwood Lake Authority Marine Patrol. Discussion? Yes, Mrs. Manson?
In the packet, in our two minutes, there were two quotes, but they appear to be the same quote, but then the email referred Larry's letter to us, I think it was the Phillipses, referred to receiving several quotes, but the quotes we received were the same. So do you know if there were different quotes in the notes we received?
I don't know that there were different quotes than the ones you received.
We only received one, but it was copied and copied twice in their packet.
Okay.
So it almost led me to believe we might not have found any. I just wanted to check.
I am not aware of additional quotes. So this is an authorization to apply for this grant that would pay for these boats that would be shared amongst the five towns along Campbell Lake. Any further discussion?
So we're voting on authorization to go for the grant.
That's correct.
But not the purchase.
There's no authorization for funds or anything like that.
Whether it's a quote or not, it might be.
Mr. Bear?
This was not a problem with the town attorney, was it? This little guy, the town attorney, not a problem?
Not a problem, he hasn't.
There's an L on there, it looks.
I have no problem with that.
Thanks. Oh, this was previously signed by Mayor Murphy, November twenty-fourth two thousand and fifteen, giving authorization as well. So, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Eight B is the discussion of possible actions to offer as a new contract with Fiber Tank. You can see from the language, this is simply the movement in the contract of the CEN network from the Board of Ed's East Streets Building to the Police Department at four-nine Poplar Street. Everything else remains the same in the contract, but for technicality purposes, we want an authorization to execute a new contract with the new locations.
Did any cost to this?
No additional cost, nothing to change, that's it.
In Mr. Hubbleman's presentation to us at the November meeting, in the minutes, he says the C E N line network would be moved to Sarah Noble from the central office building due to issues with the air motion is now house. Does that mean now those costs are no longer going to be borne, because now we have this one? Or is this, because it says the C E N line network, which, I was just reviewing the minutes, and I'm like, that's the same exact acronym, it seems a little unique to me, so I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, the Board of Ed is coordinating with Kendrick, which I presented, I just wanted to make sure.
He is, so what is your question? Is there, are we going to avoid cost by moving this to?
Yeah, because the November twenty-third minutes said the C E N line network would be moved to Sarah Noble from the central office building due to issues with the air motion is now house. It says costs would be approximately one hundred and thirteen thousand.
From what I understand, this doesn't.
We assume that's the publisher, so I just wasn't sure.
Sure.
But this only shows twenty-six thousand, nine hundred, I think, something like that. So it seems substantially less, but first the same thing, so I just wanted to make sure.
In addressing this issue with Kendrick, it was not something that would result in any additional cost. If it results in a reduction of cost because of that, that's certainly something that I will take up with him before I sign this new agreement.
Okay.
Was there, I get a motion to approve?
Motion. Motion to approve the contract that's submitted.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moving on to item nine, this is the item that Chief Furlough had discussed, the Public Works, this is a resolution to adopt the town of Milford hazardous mitigation plan prepared by Malone and McBroom. This is a copy of the plan, it tends to be about an inch and a half thick, and it has been endorsed by the Public Works departments. Is there any, is there a motion?
I'm in possession to adopt the town in order to hazard mitigation plan prepared by Malone and McBroom.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Item ten on the agenda is finance, discussion of possible action to approve the following fund balance designations from the June thirtieth two thousand and fifteen fund balance. There has been a request from the Galesville Fire Department for a radio in the amount of, for radio radios or system in the amount of five thousand dollars. I'd like to move that to be granted.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. Ray, which lines is going to be coming out of these appropriations?
This would be reserved in your fund balance pending six thirty fifteen. It was cut out of the police department budget this year, and the mayor, the prior mayor decided they needed the money, so preserving it.
And why can't have a next one charter revision?
Charter revision was in this board's budget for last year. This board did not get to start the charter revision, so rather than a tax, tax bill again for it.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Mayor.
Mrs. Manson?
Mr. Jankowski, I thought when we did the bonding for the emergency services, there was excess money left for radios, and whenever we needed radios, the money would be taken from there. Didn't, have I, maybe I was mentioning that?
I believe that was the case at one time, but I think we already did.
It's all fully extended, okay, thanks.
We found other pieces, but.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I think there was a second already. All in favor? Aye. Close.
Wait, wait, point of order. I think you made a motion for the Galesville radio.
Right.
You talked about that charter, but I don't think that was in the motion.
I just asked to vote.
Okay. So we still have to vote as well as the charter.
Okay. So the first, the motion was for the Galesville radios. Where the motion carries? Is there a motion regarding the charter revision to five thousand dollars? Second. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. Now, number eleven was an executive session matter concerning town hall employees and performance issues, so I would ask that the, Mayor motion?
Before you go into executive session, I'd just like to say for a moment, this executive session is not, is not adequate for me.
Okay.
Can I move to table this for the next meeting?
What's the concern of the board?
The concern is this is a generalization. When you go into executive session, it either has to be five-person, or it has to be, if it's a unique employee status, let's say it's one individual, you could then warrant it per the department, but the fact that it isn't either nor, I would suggest that we table this.
Let me refer that to council, who I did kind of consult with before putting this matter on the agenda.
Yeah, we looked at this beforehand, and we think this is FOIA compliance, specifically in reference to one of the exceptions under FOIA that permits executive session in the case of, I believe it's, it's under what's called six A of section one dash two hundred. And without going into the details of that statute, we think it reasonably informs the public of the content to be discussed, and there have been decisions of holding descriptions of executive session discussion of employees without those employees being identified. And I do believe this is calling for a discussion of more than one, and so the generic reference to town hall employees, we think is probable.
So Mayor, I spoke to the Office of Governmental Accountability, Freedom of Information Commission. I spoke to their attorney today, and they told me Stacy, and they told me this is not compliant.
Compliant with what, though?
With going into executive session, the wording is incorrect. And if we're going to go into cases, I'd also pull up some cases with respect of that it's not compliant. So I would just suggest that we table it, and then do it for the next meeting, so that we can stay compliant.
Let me just, let's take a five-minute recess, so that council has an opportunity to discuss your case law and your conversation with the board of council.
Thank you.
And then we'll return in five minutes. Recession, we're back on the record. Attorney Toward, you had an opportunity to review Mr. Bass's suggestions and case law.
I did.
What's your opinion regarding?
Our opinion is, I did confer with Randy Deville, my co-council, and both of us believe that we're on safe ground to proceed on this warning in light of the fact that we're talking about two former employees, and they're not present employees, and the rule is different. And we do believe that this, again, reasonably informs the public as to the content of what this executive session will be around, would be about, so that we think we can proceed.
Can we modify the agenda to say former town hall employees, or the attorney?
Well, I don't think you can do that, because he's warned it, and this is the agenda. But if it's in fact about former employees, then we think that this is adequate.
I thought my charter with two-thirds supposed to be good.
Excuse me?
I thought my charter with two-thirds, but.
Oh, yeah, you can, but that's a, I think that, in this setting, because you wanted to be compliant as to the executive session, I think, I think that this is something that this present description shouldn't be stayed with.
So you feel comfortable, John, that because it's a former town hall employee, we're okay?
Yeah.
So I make the motion to adjourn to the second. Do you have any agreement?
Yes, there's one at the town.
I'm going to introduce myself, I'm going to step outside.
Okay.
Because I believe that following F O I, and their thoughts, from what they hear, I should step aside.
Okay, I understand.
Can I just say, because it's a former town hall employee?
Uncomfortable?
No, comfortable.
Okay, very good. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor for executive session? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Mr. Bass has abstained.
Okay. Okay, good.
A naked, no motion, no votes. I do want to make a motion to suspend the rules regarding the donation of the flags earlier in the meeting. I believe that we would not make a motion to accept the flags, they do have a monetary value of approximately two hundred dollars. So, okay, somebody like to motion?
Make motion if we take Peter Orinsky's Connecticut flag and United States of America flag. Second now.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
Motion for the firm.
Second. Just a reminder, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next meeting will be at seven o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Okay. Drive for a nice Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Tomorrow.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, sure, we probably get rich.